We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ask to comply with the Hilton Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 3, 2023, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. At this time, we're on to proclamations. We have a proclamation recognizing the Seacoast Missionary Baptist Association.
All right, let's go.
So Ginny, we have a presentation for the Seacoast Missionary Baptist Association. Whereas the Seacoast Missionary Baptist Association is a positive and active association in the community tirelessly involved in outreach and ministry in the city of Asbury Park. And whereas the Seacoast Ministry, pardon, Baptist Association is a nonprofit religious corporation that was organized and founded in April 21, 1898. And whereas the purpose and activities of this nonprofit religious corporation have changed during the past 125 years due to needed transformation of the time. And whereas the Seacoast Missionary Baptist Association has and plans to continue its physical and monetary leadership for affiliated with this organization. And whereas the Seacoast Missionary Baptist Association is known for helping its association members who are experiencing illness, disability, or other debilitating situations that may prevent them from performing their occupational duties or daily activities. And whereas, Seacoast Missionary Baptist Association is involved in spreading the gospel to homes, state, and foreign missions and working wherever providence is direct with charitable purpose. And whereas, Seacoast Missionary Baptist Association provides missionary and evangelical training, presents occasional forums to discuss the social, economic, and political issues that affect communities, and helps strong educational ministries to enhance leadership skills. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Moore and the Asbury Park City Council members do hereby proclaim that Seacoast Missionary Baptist Association is a highly respected and honorable entity in the city of Asbury Park and Jersey.
So everyone, a simple here first of all, thank you. We'd like to thank the mayor and the city council members, the council for this property, the commission, the march, and the community. For 125 years, we've supported you for another 125 years. Thank you very much. You two are the people that I call, and so much.
And then.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're now on to a presentation by the AP-TV Committee for the 2022 JAG Awards.
So a lot of people don't know, so we're here. I'm so glad we have a crowd to talk about AP-TV, our public access channel, where several of our members and volunteers won awards. Ginny's going to give out these awards just so everybody knows. The public access channel plays meetings like this, Dunbar Meeting, but also community initiatives. So any sort of events that we're doing in town that we tape, you can catch them on AP-TV. We are always looking for volunteers, anyone with any sort of media experience, any sort of taping, editing, specifically editing, people seem to love to do editing. So anybody like that, please shoot me an email or shoot Donna an email and she'll get it to me and we'll let you know when we have our AP-TV meetings.
All right. Ready? Let's rock and roll. Good evening. In the spring, we had nine films that were submitted to the Jersey Access Group, which is an organization that advocates, promotes, and preserves the rights of media production, particularly in communities in New Jersey. So I'm just going to be quick because I can see we have a virtual house and a very full of judges tonight. So we had three first place winners. First was in the category of community holiday event, Moata Green won first prize for Asbury Park June Team Day Highlights. Moata. Moata was also a winner along with John Kaplow for the public ceremony taken with a single camera event for Vans of our Potty Rally. Moata, as you can see, is a Vietnam veteran. He is also a retired New York City EMT. He writes a regular column for the Tri-City News. And he is the Asbury Park weather bag, which you can always catch on our channels. John Kaplow, who is not here tonight, was a founding member of AP-TV and is a principal at New Jersey Media Works and is a big time volunteer here in Asbury Park. The third award goes to Adam Worth, who won in the category of newest magazine. Adam produced the Jersey Shore, Sandy in Mammoth, which is a retrospective done 10 years after Superstorm Sandy. Was done in conjunction with Mammoth County. And it also received an unprecedented perfect score award from the judges for these films. So. DJ. And he also has won five Emmys, like real Emmys. He's done a lot of work with Asbury Park TV and we hope he stays with us for a long time.
Do you want to say a couple of words?
Just something quick. Public TV and media has always been a big thing of mine. Like you mentioned earlier, I'm a Vietnam veteran. There's all about the Constitution, freedom of speech, democracy, and that's important these days because of what's going on in the world and how come. So that's why I've been a part of this, you know, and it's something, you know, a volunteer that happened. And that's why I do what I do. Plus, I was a guy, been a geek for what's been years, that's why I like doing the work.
Really quick to say that it's a true honor to be honored by the town where you're from. I can't think of a bigger honor. Thank you.
Okay, our next awards are awards of distinction and excellence. And the first one again goes to Moata in the category of community holiday events for his film, Universal African Festival Highlights. Next, we have three videos that were produced by, films produced, edited by Nicole Amatucci, who is our staff. She does a lot of tech work for us. She is.
Great job.
Yeah. The three films that Nicole did were for groundbreaking or ribbon-cutting ceremonies for the Asbury Park 150th Anniversary Time Capsule video, which was done last year. She also did a public service announcement called Be Kind, which basically urged viewers to please be really nice to waiters and waitresses and shoppers here in town because people can get a little angry if they have to wait for a table in a restaurant. And also she did a video tour of the Asbury Parks Senior Center, Oprah's Springwood Avenue. Nicole, in addition to working with us, is a local videographer and producer. She's been working with us since 2021. And she also works on the Bond Debate Project and is a radio personality on 88.9 FM. Yeah, I'll pull one more.
Okay.
To promotion, yes. Also, our station manager, who is probably back in the control room, Nate McAllister, won an award. Here he is. Won an award for a promotion video for Asbury Park and the Patries, which I hope all of you can get to see it. It's fantastic. It was done in conjunction with Kim Guadano over at Mercy Center.
Who's here, Kim?
Kim?
Congratulations.
I'm looking for, while I'm looking for it because I got to say.
Nate is our station manager. He's a man of many hats. He does the IT for the city. He does our programming, our scheduling. He films, he edits, he produces. And he came to us his previous life. He was a video editor for a local cable news network. And lastly, the last award is in the category of documentary. And that goes to Tom Chesick and Nate McAllister. The video is called Sir, I Exist: A Life of Stephen Crean. Now, as many of you know, Stephen Crean and his mom had a house here in Asbury Park, which is where the Historical Society and the Asbury Park Museum are located right now. Tom was a true Renaissance fan. He did a little bit of everything. And sadly, he passed away in July. So, wait until Tom. Does somebody want to accept?
Nate's right. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Sorry.
We'll get the award over to that Historical Society. They are having a convention tomorrow night at the Grand House. It's going to be a reading of Edgar Allan Poe. So if you can make it, please come. That pretty much wraps it up. I just want to say thank you to the council and the city manager and everybody who supports us on a daily basis. And thank you. And don't forget your.
We're on Channel 28, Optimum 77, and then we're also on Roku.
We're on Roku and Apple TV.
And we desperately need editors.
Please, we need volunteers.
As they said, we always need editors. We always need like video content. We got a lot of hours in the week to fill. We have two stations. It's all streaming on Roku and Apple TV. And then you can see us on Fire on Cablevision. Thanks a lot to Nicole for all the videos that she does with us. And thanks to Adam and Moata and everyone here. Just keep sending us your videos. Thanks.
I guess just thank you to everyone. It's been really an honor getting to know all of you and being able to work with you and the events that I've shot with all of you have been so much fun and I'm very grateful.
Thanks, everybody. Congratulations, guys. It may not go on. Thanks for going on. Well, actually, you know what? It may not go on. Hey Ginny. No, I think this side is still working. This is my work. Where did Ginny go?
Yeah, it should be separate here.
Yeah, it's coming on. Come on.
Okay, I turned off the heat.
Yeah.
We've tried to talk four hours.
Oh, that doesn't work for me. I can't take three.
We're now on to a. We're now into a presentation by Rudowski Development for 1001 First Avenue. Director of Planning Redevelopment, Michelle Alonso, will be giving us a summary. Thank you.
Good evening, council members and members of the public. Tonight you have a presentation by prospective developer for 1001 First Avenue. This is currently a redevelopment area. The presentation tonight is about a new proposed project, but also includes amendments to the existing redevelopment plan. So I'm going to pass over to the attorney of the prospective developer.
Thank you, Michelle. Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Kevin Kennedy. I'm an attorney in Red Bank. As Michelle indicated, I'm representing Asbury Park, I'm sorry, Asbury First LLC. And we're here tonight at the very beginning of a proposed development. And this is a concept plan. We wanted to take this opportunity to discuss our concept with regard to the 1001 First Avenue property, which is to develop this vacant land with 114 residential apartments. We have a very short presentation tonight. I know the, absolutely, I know the agenda is very tough. So I have Luke Rudowski here, who's our project manager and an engineer, and he's going to walk us through this very quickly.
Should I get a microphone or can you hear me?
Can everybody hear?
Everybody here?
Yes.
Just grab that one for it.
Thank you. It's work? All right. Thanks, Kevin. Thanks, everyone. Excited to be here tonight. My name is Luke Rudowski. My firm, Rudowski Development, is serving as project manager for 1001 First Ave. As Kevin mentioned, we are seeking some amendments to an existing redevelopment plan. Very excited to share the vision with you. First, some background. I was a resident here for eight years. My offices are still here in Asbury Park here over on Bond Street. And this is now my 11th project in the city. So we were brought in because we have a good sense of the community, and I hope you see that tonight. So to start, this is the location. We're in between First and Second Ave, centrally located, just north of Asbury Ave and west of Main Street. And this is the site as it exists today. So it's vacant. There's an unsightly chain link fence. There are some environmental conditions. I'll get to more on that later. And then if you're stepping out of the lofts across the street, you can see the view corridor right now. You're staring at warehouses. It's not a very pleasurable experience for pedestrians. And on top of that, at night, I've talked to neighbors. I know the area. It gets dark. It's not well lit. Really deserves to have a building there to brighten up the area and add to the community. So going back, this plan was conceived in 2017 into 2018. So this was a while ago that this plan was created. And you can see the initial rendering here. Subjectively, for me, it's a little boxy, it's cold. It definitely doesn't meet the market today. So when my client purchased the property in 2021, he came in with an altered concept. I think it's a nice building, but after pre-development meetings, I think the sentiment was it's big for the area. There were 134 units. That's a little bit more than the area calls for. So my team was brought in earlier in the year. We worked together with Mode Architects, also based out of Asbury Park. We had a series of pre-development meetings. And we came up with the new vision for 1001 First Ave in 2023. So this is a representative rendering of what we're proposing. We think this nice blend of modern elements and industrial elements combined with these architectural features that you don't see on every building, we think it all blends well with the area. Really excited about what we're proposing and excited to get feedback and look to take next steps. To run through the numbers, we're proposing 114 units down from the 134 previously proposed. With that, we're keeping the 20% co set aside. That means we're getting 23 affordable housing units. Where initially, there were 16 contemplated for this site. So there's a net increase in affordable housing. We are providing 137 parking spaces, all within the parking garage. That backs out to 1.2 spaces per unit. That meets the existing redevelopment plan, so we're not seeking relief. I'd be remiss if I didn't note that we're proposing eight stackers, so parking stack spaces that are used elsewhere in town. And we think for 6% of the spaces, someone gets a dedicated stacker, they pull in, press the button, car goes up, and they can park a set can in. It's the same as a tandem space or a one-car wide driveway. So we're providing all that parking within our garage. We're also proposing only one entrance. Previously, there were always two garage entrances, which takes up street parking. So we're consolidating that to one. I lived in Asbury. Everyone likes their bikes, so we are providing an oversized bike room. Everyone will have room. We're providing oversized amenities. Work from home is big in the area. I have a coworking space in town. There's a lot of demand, so we're providing that, one with a lounge and some outdoor space. The enhanced streetscapes were crucial for me on this project. There's not a ton of right of way, especially on Langford. We want to balance out this industrial feel with some green and some vegetation. We'll talk more about that on the other slide. And green features. It was always contemplated that this would be a green building with some specific components there. We want to preserve all that. So this is a view from Langford. A couple of things to talk about here. The setbacks on every frontage are enhanced. So we are allowed to go to the lot line, zero feet. On this side, I want to set it back five feet more. On the other side, set it back by at least two feet, 10 feet in other areas. This gives us more room to plant. This creates a better pedestrian experience. I'd like to create some art walls, have local artists contribute, so you can walk right up to it. You can see the transition of materials too. So we're setting back the building as you go up. Softer, lighter materials. The top level is set back 35 feet. This doesn't feel like a five-story building. Five stories are permitted. We're going with that, but this really appears from the street as a four-story building. Want to highlight some of the benefits here. So again, this was conceived for 2017. By the time we go to full permit, realistically, it's 2025 or later. A lot has changed in that time, and I think we need to respect that. We understand that with some changes, we need to show how this benefits the community. So you're creating a profound architectural building in the city. We're going to stick to that. This isn't a bait and switch. We want to include our designs as an exhibit to the amended redevelopment plan so that we can preserve the integrity of what we're proposing. As mentioned, we're going to have enhanced setbacks on all the front sides. There's three along First, Second, and Langford. Increased setbacks, enhanced landscape standards. We think this will be a big benefit to the community. It's also worth noting, so there are some contaminated soils on the site. There are underground tanks on site. The previous owner did not report to the DPP, so we're facing fines on that. And we want to clean this up, not just for our site, but for the neighborhood. There's potential that these contaminated waters can seep onto adjacent properties. Our goal is to take care of that right away. I say it's a $500,000 cost. The rest, as of yesterday, our environmental professionals are saying it's more like $600,000. That's something to keep in mind as we talk about the program for this site. I mentioned increased co-units. And we're going to meet all UX standards, provide a net of seven more co-units to the community. I mentioned the art walls. My mother was an artist in the city. She had art back in 2003. I think it's a form for the community. We'd like to give local artists a chance to leave a mark on our building. The obvious benefit is it's a vacant site, you know, a little bit of tax base for the community. Some other quick considerations. The plan always contemplated an amendment. There's a section in there that speaks to an amendment. These things take time, so we wanted to point out, we're not coming in and proposing something that wasn't already considered. It's been vacant for over 25 years. There have been safety concerns. I talked to the neighbors, so we hope to clean this up and anchor the community. We are constantly talking to the neighbors and reaching out. We're not trying to design this in a silo. I talk to the lofts, I talk to the other neighbors. We want this to be a collaboration. As mentioned, I lived in Asbury Park for the better part of a decade. Our architects are here. We respect the community and we're trying to be cognizant of what people want to see here and mesh seamlessly with the community. We're going to have a nice mix of unit types. It's not one size fits all, so we're going to have a mix of studios, one bed, one bed, one dens, and two beds, so people can stay with us and be community members. And then finally, I'll note, we're going to stick to all the original green design initiatives. Moving along, this is for context here.
Just one question. So the one bedrooms, those are really all the same, affordable? So you'll have.
So we're going, all the market rate units will be mixed to have that on the other page. The co-units are going to meet UH guidelines, so a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms with the appropriate income level distribution.
Are these condos?
Their tenants would be rental hosts.
Condos?
No.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
There's no questions until the end.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
So this is the site plan. To give you some context, I want to point out a few things. So you can't really see it here, but we noticed that the lofts were 25 feet from the curb. I want to be better than that on the other side of the road here. So in the worst case scenario, I'm showing a little over 27 feet here to the curb. And then you can see, although this is a two-foot setback where zero is required, we have 10 feet here. And then we really soften this corner. We do 10 feet along this corner, five feet along Langford, where we have that tight right of way, and two feet on the other side. Again, this is to create a better pedestrian experience. We're going to landscape that, light it up. It's going to be a much better experience than it is today for both walkers and people driving by. And I think softening this corner is a really key component to this intersection as well. It's safer as you travel through. I talked to the loft owners quite a bit, and I'm really focused on meshing with them and making sure that they're happy with what we're proposing. Something they brought up was moving this driveway. They don't want headlights coming in. And I completely understand that. That's why we had these informal meetings ahead of that. So we intend to move this driveway location, and we intend to have continued conversations with them to make sure they're pleased with what we're moving forward with. In general, as I mentioned, one access point, we have pretty heavy parking all around the first floor with a focus on amenities and access on the corner. Just representative architecture, so this is a typical floor plan. You can see the mix of units. The breakdown is up here, 20 studios, 28 one-beds, twelve one-bed, one dens, 31 two-beds. So it's not, it's not exact yet, but that's the representative breakdown of the unit types. We want a mix of tenants. We want people to come and start in a studio and be here years later with us as they need more space. So this is a sort of a donut-style layout, central green roof, and the units are loaded along the perimeter with one row on the interior as well. Top level, as I mentioned, is set back 35 feet as required. And, you know, the intent there is to give some roof deck space, but for it not to be visible from the street. So it really softens that top level. But this is a representation of how the building will lay out internally. Just wanted to bring this up. So our goal coming in was not to overhaul the redevelopment plan. It was created for a reason. So we wanted to respect as many of the regs as we could accommodate. I list everything up here, and it shows we are conforming or improving on almost all of the regulations. Two areas where we are seeking amendments are the unit counts, so 85 up to 114. Again, this was down from 134 previously proposed. And building coverage, we sought some guidance from the city here. They mentioned a mix of building coverage and lot coverage of 84 and 89 is consistent with other developments. I'd also like to note, if we weren't doing that, you know, we're permitted to go zero setback along the perimeter, and we're, so the rear setback is something that we're sticking to. If we had to reduce coverage, we'd simply cut out a U towards this area, and nothing would really change from any of the frontages or the rear views. It's really something we're looking to fill in. It's really something we're looking to fill in completely. So really, in all of this, our only goal is to amend the plan to change these two parameters out of everything else that's in the plan. Just the last few. You know, I've worked on a handful of projects here and I always feel it's best to think of the community first. I saw the old plan, I just don't think it fits, I don't think it does Asbury justice. This is something we're really proud of. We're hoping to work with the community and city officials and staff to move this forward. I've reached out to the neighbors, but feel free to share my information. Because our goal is to take this and determine next steps. So thank you for your time and I hope you enjoy what we're creating here.
Mr. Mayor, that is all we had, I don't know if we did notice, I didn't know what the process is for the city, but.
What we've done in the past, I'm going to leave it up to the council. It's like we've had the presentation, we have a couple minutes and we open it up to the public.
Okay.
And what I would ask is, there's a lot of public here tonight, maybe on a lot of issues. If the people that have questions about this issue went to the mic first and were given that availability, then they could all leave and we could, guys could get seats, so.
Thank you, I appreciate your time, I know the agenda is very tough.
Kevin, you meet the parking department.
Yes. Thank you. We'll wait.
Thank you. We're now on to matters from City Council, Councilmember Buzz Anderson.
Yes, I have an announcement. The Asbury Park Recreation Department will host Trunks, Trunk or Treat. And that will be next Tuesday from 4:30 to 6:00 PM. So bring your little ghosts and goblins out to have a spectacular time. And candy will be given, so wear your best costumes, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes, so the city has a food assistance program. Free meal kit giveaway on Saturday, 10/28, from 10 to 12 at City Hall. So you should register with Department of Community and Cultural Affairs or email Cassandra Dickerson at the City of Asbury Park.
Councilmember Clayton.
October is breast awareness, is breast cancer awareness month. And we just want to alert everyone to please take care of your health. It's not just a disease, it affects women, it also affects men. So do what you need to do to take care of your health. If you have an issue, please go to your doctor. It's been 13 years since I was diagnosed in October. So I am living proof that with early detection, you can go on and live. So thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Nope, nothing.
Mayor Moore.
The only thing I have is the presentation, it's not being voted on tonight. It's an opportunity to get feedback from everybody within 200 feet that the project was notified by the applicant. So I know there's some people here that want to ask those questions, so it's going to help the city make up their minds, it's going to help the developer make up their minds if they have to change anything. So when we get to the public session, that's going to give the time for you to ask those questions. But no vote will be taken tonight on this project, thank you.
Thank you, matters from the city manager.
No. You can.
Our new, our social services department has moved to the transportation center. So anyone seeking services or the location is over here, no longer at City Hall.
Thank you, matters from the city attorney.
Nothing at this time, Lisa.
Thank you, we're now on to public participation, may I motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move it second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation is now open. Any member of the public who would like to speak, please use the microphone at the back of the room. State your name and address for the record. There will be a three minute time limit for each speaker, your name and address.
Where's Luke to answer these questions?
Sylvia Sylvia, Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to commend all of you, everybody that was involved in making the new social services office. You guys had the ribbon cutting today, which was spectacular. I had an opportunity to take a tour of it. And that, our transportation center was a really underutilized opportunity here. And I think you guys did a really great job with figuring out what to do with it. And from what Mayor Moore said during the ribbon cutting, that was all thanks to Donna. So Donna, another win for you, you're spectacular, don't turn away from me lady. You're another, you really have done a spectacular job and thank you for that. I just left there again, the sister circle is using it for their meeting tonight. And it really is a spectacular spot, so thank you guys for doing that, that's everything.
Thank you.
Thank you. One second, please. Kevin, is Luke here to answer questions? I mean, so maybe you better get him back in the room.
He's here.
Okay. I think some of these questions are going to be directed toward you, okay, go ahead, sir.
Yes, my name is Rick Mortlock, I'm a resident of the lofts for about 13 years. So I want to thank Luke and his firm for reaching out to our HOA on several occasions, listening to our concerns and responding to our concerns. I think the building in general is an attractive design. And we seriously appreciate the increase in the setbacks. We have a tall building, this building's going to be tall. And if you don't have those setbacks, you feel like you're enclosed in. I do think the increase from 80 units to 114, I know that the presentation said 85, but the original documentation was 80, needs to be examined in terms of the impact on population density. We have three housing authority buildings, plus our building, plus probably two dozen single family and two family homes, a total of 275 units in a square block. So this amended plan seeks to increase the number of dwellings by 40%. That means a lot more cars and increase in pedestrian traffic in an area that already has serious traffic and speeding issues. Second Avenue is a five block stretch with no stop signs, no traffic lights, no speed bumps. And we have the Bradley School that's right in the heart of all of that. With hundreds of parents and young and older children crossing at Comstock and Second and Pine and Second and Langford and Second. Anyone sitting out there between 7:30 and 8:30 in the morning, it's the wild, wild west. So just ask the crossing guards, it's bound to get worse after the safe routes for school projects on Third and Fourth Avenue go into effect, because drivers will just realize they can speed down Second Avenue. So while safety, speeding and safety is a public issue and not part of the amended plan, I do feel that the two must go hand in hand and the city must be proactive in addressing a serious safety issue that exists now and not after a building goes up. Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Swanson, I'm also a resident of the lofts. And I'm up here to show Luke his, the support that he's asking for, but also to echo Rick's concerns. I think that the density is a question, but I do appreciate the designs. And I love the fact that Luke came to us before coming to the city council and is trying very hard to work with us. I do have a couple of other questions that are off topic, do you want me to come back on?
No, go ahead.
So the first one is for you, Mr. Mayor. What I've watched, everyone in the city council meetings, and I noticed that oftentimes you vote yes for many of the amendments, but you vote no when it comes to paying the bills. And I'm just kind of curious as to why the inconsistency, that's the first question. The second question is, I've also noticed that a sidewalk on Third Avenue has been eliminated. And I'd like to understand why that sidewalk was eliminated, I haven't seen anything about that. And I'm kind of curious about that. And the last question has to do with the parking fees. The revenue was posted. I know that we're in a fund counting situation, a fund accounting situation. And the beach revenue goes to the running of the beach and so forth. I'm just kind of curious if the parking revenues go into the general fund or is there a specific fund where that money goes to? That's the end of my questions, thank you.
Okay, one second. Where exactly is the sidewalk? Because I don't know the answer, so I'm about the city manager asked, it disappeared.
Yeah, it's down close to the boardwalk, across the street from where, I'm going to call it the up house. There's a building going up, I forget the name of the development. But directly across the street from that, right now, they're in the process of building out the forms on, I believe it's Third Avenue, yeah.
Okay, what she said is probably because of the construction and it will come back.
Okay.
As far as the parking revenue, excuse me. The majority of it goes back into like, not the general fund, I'm going to say. The majority of it goes back into like the repaving of all the streets we've been doing the past several years. And like the one going on right now is Memorial Drive. And we're, when Ocean Township repaves a street, they grind and mill it and that's it. But we're going down eight feet and removing 110 year old terracotta sewer pipes because they're all broken to crack. So when it rains, the sewer plant is like pumping, say 10 million gallons of water instead of like 2 million gallons of sewage. So we've seen a significant decline and it's something that has to be done. And so since like repaving a street, any street being eighth, which is next, First is coming up. And we've been doing this for the past seven years. We've been doing a street at least once a year. But to replace the street and not replace the sewer lines means like when that pipe breaks, we're going to rip up that brand new street. So the price is more expensive, it's a little bit more slower and, but that's where the parking revenue, most of the money has been going into. So both going back into the infrastructure. I vote no on bills and claims because before Donna, years ago, we voted no on something, they said, well, too late, we already bought it. So I'm like, well, why is it even in front of me? So I mean, it just makes no sense to me if like, it was buying an SUV or something. And we questioned like, why do we need this? And the city manager said, well, too late, I already bought it. So I still question the process of the bills and claims, like, tell me this money hasn't been spent yet. And then I'll start voting yes. And we're getting much better.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you and you.
You got a lot.
This is regarding to the building thing, my name is Mick Marzaki, I live in the lofts. I too am concerned about density and traffic. But the reason I'm speaking right now is we have what I would consider a severe flooding problem on the corner of Langford and Second Avenue. And I am concerned about if this will contribute to the flooding or maybe we have some resolve to this issue. I understand the pipes are too small on the ground and the level of Dea Lake have something to do with it, I'm not a civil engineer. All I know is when we have extended rain or heavy thunderstorm, the severity of the flooding in my opinion is severe. I don't know if this will continue it and I would hope if you do build, that maybe you'd have a solution to this. Thank you.
Okay, and Luke, address that question where you have to build us per DEP specifications with water quantity and quality control.
Correct, so the recent, especially the recent updates to DEP's storm management guidelines, you're required to contain our stormwater on site. So this site will have the compliant chambers under the garage most likely, possibly some best management practices around the perimeter, swells and whatnot. But we won't, by code, we cannot contribute to increased flooding issues offsite, all has to be contained. Just some other.
Nope, we're good.
To the other questions?
The traffic question.
Oh, yeah. I was just going to ask Rick and it'd be great to talk to, so happy to continue the conversation. Traffic, we're in alignment there, we both want a safe neighborhood for everyone involved, especially people pulling out of our building. You know, they don't want to be pulling out and facing these high traffic situations, people speeding by. Definitely talked about some traffic calming techniques, really unrelated to our site itself, but maybe as we go and do some work there, we can look at something. And then just a clarification on the density. So 80 units was permissible on the top floors. Under the original plan, you were allowed to have five units on the first floor as well. So it is 85, I'm just saying that because I wasn't misrepresenting anything. So 85 was permissible, which a net increase of 90. But agreed on the traffic and thank you for the input.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Sonya Spina, I live at 1001 Second Avenue in the lofts building. I've been there for over nine years with my husband and we're raising our son in the city. We have a lot of neighbors, we have about 30 units in the lofts building on a property that's about two thirds the size of the property across the street where this new development is going to go. And a lot of those owners couldn't be here today because they were attending the school board meeting, which is at the same time. So I have a couple of things I just wanted to say out loud. First, I want to thank Luke, I sent an email and he responded to me very quickly with an answer, so I appreciate that. Appreciate you coming to the lofts first and doing a meeting for us. And I just wanted to say this out loud, so it's on the record. We appreciate the setbacks and the new look of the building. The reason we are asking for the parking entrance to be moved is not just because of headlights into lower units, it's also because, as you know, that exit to the parking for the lofts is on the same, is right nearby. We sort of pull out and inch out and hope for the best that no one's driving 50 miles an hour down the street, which happens quite frequently. And we just know that adding another 114 units across the street with all of your exit traffic coming down the same spot is too much traffic and we feel like Langford and First Avenue are better places for those. As maybe for the entrance, we noticed that the development says 1001 First Avenue, but in the rendering, the entrance is now moved to Second Avenue and it says 1000 Second Avenue. So I just wanted to say that out loud. Obviously, the density is a concern for everyone in that area. Rick's numbers are exactly what we should be looking at and what we're going to be adding to that small area of the city. And also that we're adjacent to a lot of one family homes, so adding a building that big, I just want to make sure we're not just changing the whole look and feel of what's happening over there. And then I lived in Manhattan for 15 years, I'm very familiar with stackers. I can also say stackers, in my opinion, are not convenient. And so I can imagine that if you come home and you need to get in your house and you need to get out of your car to lower the stacker, it might be just easier to find street parking. And I can tell you already on Second Avenue, there is no street parking. So I just want to voice that concern out loud. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, so Jordan Modell, 1001 Second Avenue, the lofts. I actually ran out of my own meeting, the board of ed, board of ed debate, just to come here to voice my opinion. And then I'll run back again, so thanks for everyone for letting me up front. We, as far as I know, are dead set against this project as it is proposed. It would change the face of the West Side. It's not the Asbury Park we know and love. It is way too dense, it's 50% more dense than the last thing that they proposed. There is going to be nowhere near enough parking spots for the people there. There will be no parking on the street, there'll be no parking for people coming to visit that building, there'll be no parking for people to visit us, there'll be no parking for the laundry that's right around the corner from them. There are trucks already stacked there now, we have no idea where they're going to go. This is a big deal and this is not something that we should rush into. We should take a look at this plan and revise it so that it is convenient for the neighborhood. Sonya is exactly right as far as where the entrance should be placed. And the developers were totally disingenuous with us because they told me the last time that they were definitely going to put it on First Avenue, you turn around and all of a sudden it's on Second Avenue. So I'm not sure what you can possibly believe from the developers at this point. There is going to be, think about it, people, as Sonya pointed out, if you're trying to pull into the parking lot and you're waiting for someone to move their car up or down, there's going to be a major traffic problem on Second Avenue, it's going to be completely stacked up. There'll be no places to park for the people trying to work at the laundry. You know the one I'm talking about, I can't remember, HSBC, whatever it is it's called. It's a big deal. And I think we're rushing into this, and I think we're rushing into this way too fast. It should not be something that is approved now. This is going to change the face of the West Side. There will be no parking for lots of reasons. It also will affect the projects across the street. There are trucks, there are medical and food deliveries there, sometimes they stay there for hours. They will have no parking because people will be. They will have no parking because people will be parking on the street. There'll be no place for people to come out of the projects and go and get their meals, no place for them to go and get their shots, which go get delivered there. This is a big deal. It is not something we should take lightly. Anyway, thank you very much. Going to rush back to my other meetings.
Hold on one second. Just, nope, your time's done, but just to correct you. Because you were rushing back and forth between meetings.
Yeah.
No vote is being taken tonight. This is to get public input. No vote's being taken. We're not rushing into anything.
Thank you. It's my fault. Sorry, I thought there was a vote for you taking too much, but still.
Thank you.
Do you have to do those things?
Yep.
Thank you for the feedback. We're always listening. A couple of things there. So the driveway entrance, were you in when I gave the presentation? So I can't speak to what was proposed before I got involved. As far since I've been involved, I talked to you guys about relocating the driveway. We have every intent to do that. We're not, we're not changing that. So even though you got the presentation, that will work with you and learn what's left there. You said that before.
Okay, 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 that's it.
Okay, so.
Luke, and as to specific questions, you're good.
Okay.
Hello, Felicia Simmons, Sewell Avenue, Asbury Park. I'm president of the West Side Community Center, Historical Renovation Association, and a bunch of other things. I have multiple reasons, but the first one I'm going to speak about is to point of the project proposed. The project proposed, it is dense, right? It is, it is all of those things most people said, but it is needed. If we don't understand that there is a housing crisis in town and not just in town, but in this country, right? We need these beautiful apartments. And when you said they're for rent, it touched, it touched me because, again, I'm a renter. So, and 80% of the city is a renter. And we have no place to go. We know there are homeless, but there's homeless working people, not just people that stroll around. There's literally people, I just helped a lady who literally had no place to go and was living in her car, but she had an income. So when we, when we think about these things and the convenience of them, we have to think about the need that is exploding through the city, right? If you look at the park at night, it is a town. It is a village of homelessness. So when, then it's economics at all levels. So we have to make sure that that is addressed on a broader picture. And the fact that there are affordable and market rate is something that is truly needed in this community. And plus, years ago, when they were first building the Lofts, they said the same thing, right? There are people sitting in the, in the meeting saying that it will change the face of the community. But like now, that space was twenty, been empty for 20 years. So was the Lofts empty for nearly 30. So again, history has to repeat itself and it's a good thing now. I have a few friends that live in the Loft and it's, it's something that needs to be done. Second, as also being the head of a social justice agency, we have to sit back and really talk about what we are doing, our policing in town. There's a lot of great police here, but we have to understand the duty of our police and our police is to, in our city, should be to govern and to help assist people. There was a police officer who literally helped a man lose his job. And it was somebody using the police as a form of violence against the man because the store didn't approve against him, didn't want to give him his money back. It's all on video. It is quite horrible, right? It was, he was in the right, you know, he was in the right the whole way through. So we have to address how we handle the police and policing in town. And then also really quickly, right, on the third, fourth, and fifth of November, we are having a festival at the West Side Community Center. We've been off the market for many years, but I've become the new president and our job is to turn it back over to the community because it is needed. And thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Jill Wright. I'm also a Loft resident on.
Your name for the record?
Jill Wright. Thank you. And I want to reiterate some of the points that have been made, but also appreciate everyone that's spoken so far. I actually agree with everything, including the need for housing. So I'm talking about the, not that it shouldn't be done, but the density is very high. And looking at a few of the other projects in, in the city that have been approved, the ones with the higher densities are in more commercial districts or zones, I should say. So, you know, for example, and the Loft is not the best example because the Loft is an old warehouse building that was converted. So it was actually in place, so setbacks and density are a given. They were born with the project, which the density is actually very low of less than 40 per acre. This development is asking for a pretty high density, almost 90 per acre, I believe, which that kind of density has been given to other projects in more dense and commercial zones. We're really in a residential area and I feel like the density is too high. And not only the density, but I think part of that is also the building coverage and the loft coverage are also exceeding the allowed. So it is a very nice building, knowing how difficult it is to do this kind of development. I've been in the architecture industry for 30 years. It is a difficult task and you've done a great job. But I do feel that it's too many units, too much traffic, too many people for that small piece of property.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Darrell Hambray, 1104 Asbury Avenue. I've been in the city for 57 years. Loft building was a warehouse for over 37 years. When they proposed the project for Loft, nobody in the city complained. They wanted building, building in the Asbury Park. Nobody complained. You know, it was, it was a sore eye. The same thing with this, with the land right there. That been there since I graduated, 1984. And that was, that land was bladed since then, since 1984. Now we got something developed, want to invest in Asbury Park over a $5 million project. You know what I'm saying? They beat all the regulations and set aside anything else. So I'm saying like, hold on, when y'all, when they built that loft, nobody complained. They wanted to see some building. Somebody built jobs, anything else in Asbury Park. Now we got this, this field been over there since almost 35, 40 years and the developer want to invest their money in Asbury Park and out here, this and that. And me, Amy, our sons, my daughter, her son go to the Third Avenue School. Lane for the Avenue don't have no traffic in the morning, all afternoon. It's be on, it be on comp stop. I come down that way because there's no traffic every day. You know what I'm saying? So when you hear it's a, there's a lot of traffic and they all knows, know, know, I go down there every day. It's actually traffic is just on Third Avenue because our population, our school population shrink. So there's no, really no big traffic, no heavy jam. But on Lane for the Avenue, I goes, when I drop my kids off at school, I go down Lane for the Avenue. You know, so that's what you just think about, you know, what I'm saying, like, when that loft was built, nobody said, no, we wanted to build, we wanted construction in Asbury Park. You know, so now they there, they want, hold up, bro. You know, so I understand they, okay, the developers got to address that. But far as like density, hey, we seeing it right there. But they didn't mention there's another project on Asbury Avenue, going to be 100, 100 something units, 100 something units. And that's, that's like three blocks away, Asbury, First, and Second, and Third Avenue. I'm done. That's what you have to think about, you know what I'm saying? That was like a misleading when it said it's traffic jam. I know it's, it's not. I go down there every day. I'm born and raised in Asbury. I want to see development. I'm done.
Thank you.
Good evening, America. My name is Nurse Nance and I was listening to this housing project, okay? To piggyback off of what.
Can you provide your address for the record, ma'am?
My name is Nancy Phillips and I live at 415 Fisher Avenue, Neptune, New Jersey, 07753. To piggyback off of what Felicia Simmons said, building housing would be great because it would take a lot of homeless people off the street. But also you have to take into consideration, okay? How much is the rent? You mentioned everything else except for how much the rent is, okay? You have to take into consideration that you live in Asbury Park. People already feel some type of way. We already feel like y'all trying to push out all the black people and move into white so y'all could build million-dollar condos. I'm not trying to be racist, but this is how the people of Asbury Park feels, okay? These new apartments, do you have to have a credit check? Like these, you know, like the Housing Authority? These new apartments, are y'all going to, are y'all going to expect? Are y'all going to make for sure that the residence has heat? Because Steven Madder has no heat. I've been to Cold and Force me three times and one week alone, the Steven Madder Vita Gardens, they don't have heat. Now, I have a question for you, since you own a property building. If someone put a picture of a black man on your wall, on your building, would you be offended? Because there's a problem going on, hold on, let me tell you, there's a problem going on right now. My friend John Romero, he's a small black business owner, okay? He has a store called Mr. Pizza, okay? He, the city of Asbury Park is not going to let my friend open up the store because they're saying that a black man eating fried chicken, not even chicken, a chicken sandwich is racist. Also, while I'm standing here, these people right here, they're from the union. Just this morning, it was a huge wreck planted right in front of the police department. It was like eight feet tall, America, okay? And I asked, why are y'all here? And it's the same story. The union is mad because y'all hired outsiders to build the fire department when you have all these people that live right here in Asbury Park and they deserve a job. Why don't you hire some of these people to help build this? It almost sounds like you're building condos, sir. Like, not trying to be funny, ballpark. How much are these rents? How much is the rent that you're talking about?
Yeah, by the way, you want to focus on the rent?
Well, first the rent, yeah. How much is the rent?
So the rent is a function, the market rate units. So 80% of the units will be market rate, that'll be determined when they're built properly.
Approximately. How much is a studio?
I can't speak to that.
What do you mean you can't? Is it $1,500 a month?
It's not my role.
Is it in the millions? How much is a studio? You said everything but the price. Okay. Yes, sir.
So 20% of the units will be COA, Council of Affordable Housing. That is governed by the state. Rents are set by median income in this region, not us. So state governs rent and the distribution of bedrooms or rent amounts. We're required to provide heat, electric, all of that at a certain level of income and we have no say in what that is. Already there, these units will be administered properly according to state regs.
Is there low-income housing? I'm sorry, is there low-income housing?
And moderate housing.
Your time's up. Thank you.
Last note is that with this side building, there will be a net increase in affordable housing units proposed, seven more than the revenue.
Carrie Martin, 1,001 Second Avenue, also a Loft resident. I feel a lot of the same issues that Mick brought up with stormwater and density. But my main concern is, is traffic in the area. Already Second Avenue is a speedway. So I feel like there's lots of things the city could already do with four-way stops and curb bump outs in that area. I do think too, there's one thing very unique about Langford Street. It might be the only block in the city that's like this, that does, has no driveways on it currently. So no residential driveways, no business driveways. So in my world, Langford Street doesn't even need to be a street. It could be some pedestrian area, but, but in reality, that's probably not going to happen. But if the entrance does get moved to Langford Street, I think what we should consider is being a little bit more bold. I feel like I do appreciate the setbacks, but I think we can be even bolder with that and do some concept of a shared street, which appears in a lot of cities around the world where it's not a car-dominated street, the, the street, and James probably knows all this, is he still here? Where the, the street is raised to the, to the sidewalk level. So it's kind of saying to cars too that, that you don't own this street. Because especially if the entrance is coming in and out on Langford. It also tells people this isn't a cut-through anymore. It's not just a place you can kind of just go through. You're going down Langford Street to get in and out of the building. And you're also slowing down your speed too because of the, the raised street. I know it is a little maybe hard to imagine. It's also too, the Board of Ed building is up against that street, which is a perfect place for public art. So I think just being even bolder with the setbacks. I actually do have a rendering of this that I can send you via email to picture it. That's it. Also, I do, I feel like a lot of condo buildings now, new ones in Asbury, I haven't seen them, but the, the, what I hear some from residents is that bikes are treated like a toy that gets shoved in a closet and it doesn't become a form of transportation. And people have a hard time, they're supposed to shove it in some foyer and then they don't get out and use their bikes. So you did say oversized bike room, make it as nice or treat it as seriously as you do all the parking spaces in the, in the, in the building, to make it a form of transportation to again alleviate, you know, speeding cars and people getting in their cars. So don't cheap out on the oversized bike room. That's it.
Any more, anybody else for this project?
Then you guys can go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
My name is Sean McGrath. I'm a resident of Wall Township and I do business in Asbury Park over the last 12 years. Changing the subject a little bit from what else has been talked about so far, but on a little bit of a lighter note, I'm here to just thank, with my business partner Gil Olson, we're here to thank the mayor, council, and city manager and everyone involved in the city of Asbury Park for another great summer. We run summertime surf school and this has been the conclusion of our, of our season. Just had a little letter that I prepared, I can distribute to everyone as well after I'm done speaking, but I'm just going to read it. Just says, after 12 years of building a small business in the city of Asbury Park, we'd like to thank everyone who's helped us grow into a sustainable operation. We genuinely appreciate the opportunity to bring our services to the residents and visitors of Asbury Park. In a city known for many attractions, we believe our surf school is one of the most family-friendly educational resources, contributing positively to the town's ever-growing reputation. There's one person who we'd like to thank above all, and that's Chief Lifeguard Joe Bonjivani. Joe's dedication to his work and safety has set the standard very high and with his help, we've enjoyed 100% safety record over the last 12 years. His ease of communication, calm demeanor, and openness to solve issues collaboratively are exceptional and inspirational. We hope to work under Joe for years to come. As a mission-driven organization, there's a bunch of different ways in which we measure our success. Through previous work with the Asbury Park Boys and Girls Club and more recent collaborations with the Asbury Park Recreation Department, with notable help from Amy Quinn and Lisha Floyd, we have been able to offer over 100 local Asbury Park families the opportunity to attend our Surf and Ocean Safety Camp via scholarship at no cost to the local people. We have enjoyed coming to Martin Luther King Upper Elementary School for the last two years and giving water safety presentations at the end of each school year to try to popularize surfing as a sport and beach safety and culture among the local youth. The 2023 calendar year is the final year of our current lease and we would kindly like to ask the mayor, council members, and the city manager to begin the process for us to continue our momentum together. The current structure to the lease is for three years with two one-year extensions and this is very much appreciated as it is, allows us to confidently invest in our operation and, and our team with a long term in mind. Lastly, there's a QR code at the bottom of this that has a little bit of a highlight reel of, because we know that, you know, this is a big city with a lot of really important things and important issues and not everyone gets a chance to come up and see our operation in, while it's, you know, during the summer months up on the north end of town. So we have a little highlight reel with some videos of the participants enjoying what we offer. Thanks again. And if it's okay to approach the council, I'll just drop this off to.
Yeah, just bring them up here. Well, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Seeing nobody else that wants to speak, make motion to close?
Oh, no. To close, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The participation portion is now closed. Thank you. Okay, we are now on to the minutes. I have the executive and regular meeting minutes of the October 11th meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
and city council to execute a subordination of mortgage for Laura and George Bonifaz for property located at nine fifteen Sunset Avenue, Asbury Park.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're on to individual resolutions. I have Resolution twenty twenty-three, four eighty-seven, a resolution approving payment of bills. P O numbers twenty-three, oh-two, five-nine-three, twenty-three, oh-two, six-nine-zero, twenty-three, oh-two, seven-two-five, and twenty-three, oh-two, seven-two-three have been removed from the bill list. Do I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're on to individual resolutions. I have Resolution twenty twenty-three, four eighty-seven, a resolution approving payment of bills. P O numbers twenty-three, oh-two, five-nine-three, twenty-three, oh-two, six-nine-zero, twenty-three, oh-two, seven-two-five, and twenty-three, oh-two, seven-two-three have been removed from the bill list. Do I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
No.
Resolution twenty twenty-three, four sixty-two, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city council to execute a subordination of mortgage for Laura and George Bonifaz for property located at nine fifteen Sunset Avenue, Asbury Park.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three, four seventy-six, a resolution authorizing the utilization of project labor agreements on a project-by-project basis for public works projects undertaken by the city involving costs in excess of five million dollars. So I have a motion.
Move it.
Second.
I would like to add something, please.
Go ahead.
Um, the building trades is coming to the Asbury Park High School, and it will follow the students beginning in ninth grade all the way through their twelfth grade. The superintendent is going to be meeting with, uh, Wyatt Earp. You all know who he is. And, uh, they will be meeting on the first and begin strategizing how the curriculum is going to be brought into the school system. As you know, it is, our students have to be proficient in math, so that when they complete the program, they will be apprentice and then journeyman. So, um, having the PLA in the city, this is going to be a wonderful thing for our students as well. Thank you.
Is that yes? Thank you. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes, and I'd also like to add something. You know, at first I was a little uncertain about this and the impact to our community, but I realized that, um, there have been some amendments to the agreement to create opportunities for local, um, unskilled labor and partially skilled labor, and so I appreciate that, and I am voting yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
I was a yes two weeks ago, so I'm still a yes.
Thank you. Resolution twenty twenty-three, four seventy-seven, a resolution adopting an affirmative marketing plan for the city of Asbury Park.
I think Anshel wants to say something, Lisa.
Go ahead.
Do you want to say something?
I do.
Okay.
I just have to get myself together.
Okay.
First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming out, and I want to thank mayor and council for voting to have this project in place, and I want to thank Frank and Tom Di Parto for everything, for working this out, and this is going to benefit all of our residents. Thank you. And our city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Resolution twenty twenty-three, four seventy-seven, a resolution adopting an affirmative marketing plan for the city of Asbury Park.
Move it.
Move it. Oh, no. Move to remove.
A table?
You know, if, if it weren't a hundred degrees in here, I would-
I agree.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna second to table.
Table. So motion to table and a second to table.
Obviously, we're moving it.
Well, I have a motion and a second to table.
Beth wants it removed, and then on with the corrections-
Okay, so we'll vote no on the table, then you make a motion to remove.
Whatever it could be one. Okay.
If you have the motion, the second-
Yeah.
Table, we'll vote no on that, uh, make a motion to remove. Is that okay?
Okay. So, motion to table to the November eighth meeting? Councilmember Bez Anderson?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Chapman?
No.
Councilmember Clayton?
No.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
No. Make a motion to remove it from the agenda.
Move to remove.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution twenty twenty-three, four eighty-eight, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a water pump needed at the wastewater treatment plant.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three, four eighty-nine, a resolution authorizing the purchase of electricity, fifty percent green supply services for public use on an, on an online auction website.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three, four ninety, a resolution authorizing the purchase of records management software for the fire department.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three, four ninety-one, a resolution authorizing the purchase of loader forks needed for the beach department.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three, four ninety-three, a resolution authorizing a professional services contract to C D M Smith for engineering services for design of Phase One wastewater treatment plant improvements.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three, four ninety-four, a resolution amending a contract with air system maintenance for the installation of two V F Ds for the new chilled water pumps at the municipal building.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three, four ninety-five, a resolution rescinding Resolution twenty twenty-three, four thirty-two, awarding a contract to Millennium Communications Group for security cameras in various locations within Asbury Park.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three, four ninety-six, a resolution of support authorizing a New Jersey Department of Transportation Safe Routes to School Program grant application.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three, four ninety-seven, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Asbury Park to enter into a fourth amendment of a subsequent developer agreement with A P Block four thousand one Venture Urban Renewal LLC to extend the outside approvals date in connection with the development of property located at Block four thousand one, lots two through fifteen, currently Block four thousand one, lots two point oh one, two point oh two, and two point oh three. Do I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three, four ninety-eight, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Asbury Park to approve the execution of a memorandum of understanding regarding the submission of an application for a grant pursuant to the boardwalk restoration fund for certain improvements to the Asbury Park boardwalk and for the partial repair and restoration of the Paramount Theater, the Grand Arcade, and Convention Hall.
Move it. Second.